The Kenmore Planning Commission, first item of business is citizen comments. Do we have any citizens present who care to render comments?
I see one hand raised.
Okay.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner members. I'm David Morton. I live near Redmond. May I begin?
Go ahead.
The minute starts now. Thank you.
All right. Some people wonder what comes out of the stack of Cadman's Hot Mix Asphalt or HMA plant in Kenmore. The plant's process begins when cold, wet sand and gravel is transported on a conveyor belt into a rotary dryer to heat and dry the aggregate material. This evaporates a lot of water from the aggregate. The hot water vapor is then ducted to a baghouse collector to remove particulate matter, and the steam is then exhausted to the atmosphere through the stack. This produces a white plume of steam, which is the plant's most visible emission seen from a distance. Some have suggested that the stack at the Cadman Asphalt Plant emits only water vapor. To be clear, Cadman's asphalt stack emissions in Kenmore have never been tested for hazardous air pollutants, or HAPs, which includes volatile organic chemicals, or VOCs, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, or PAHs. It's been suggested that no such pollutants are emitted from Cadman's stack. EPA document AP42, section 11.1, has a good overview discussion of asphalt plant operation and typical emissions to the air. A study was conducted on a number of HMA facilities in the late 1990s. VOCs, HAPs, and many other air emissions were analyzed and tabulated in this EPA document. Table 11.1-9 of AP42 shows calculated emission factors, which relate the number of pounds of hazardous air pollutants emitted per ton of HMA manufactured. Information from the table allows us to calculate that Cadman can emit 2,300 pounds, or nearly 1.2 tons of hazardous air pollutants from its stack every year. The EPA has determined the standard best-case process for making hot mix asphalt, even when using EPA methodology. An HMA facility like Cadman's emits about a ton of hazardous air pollutants per year. But if the facility adds additional solvents such as diesel and/or kerosene to their paving mix, hundreds of tons of hazardous air pollutants may be emitted per year. So it is incorrect to say that Cadman emits only water vapor. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, David, for your comments. Rita, any other citizens present that we can?
I don't see any more.
Great. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is approval of minutes from the January 5th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Do I hear a motion in second on those minutes?
I so moved.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the minutes from the January 5th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Any discussion on that motion? See none. Rita, do you want to go ahead and call the call the roll on that, please?
Commissioner Greathouse?
Aye.
Or sorry, Commissioner Lutis? Incorrect.
Aye.
I got your name wrong.
Aye. It's Lutis, but aye, yes.
Commissioner Ben Benazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
I think that's all of them. Oh, sorry, Chair Orshol.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like it passes. The next item of business is, pull it up here. Invite the city staff to join us for the next the next item, please.
Thank you, Chair Orshol. Laurie is currently having computer issues, so she is trying to rejoin. I'm having trouble with my camera right now, so it's going to be one of those nights, I'm afraid. I'd also like to recognize Mike Stanger, who's with us from Arch. As you know, Arch helps the city when we have housing issues. So as we update the housing element of the comprehensive plan, then Mike will be assisting us with that. So for this evening, again, this is we're continuing continuing with background information related to the docket. And as you know, the docket is going to be focused on updating the, at least for this year, the land use and housing element of the comprehensive plan. And there is a state required update of the comprehensive plan, which is due in June 2024. And that update has to be consistent with the regional planning policies, so Vision 2050, as well as the countywide planning policies. Some of those policies are just being updated, and we're expecting to get more information from the county in probably March, along with updated information for growth targets. So new target dates for population growth and employment. So that information will also be helpful as we work through updating the land use element. And the focus likely for the looking at the visioning, so what does the community want to see? What is the community vision over the next 20 years? So asking the community what they want to see will be important. And as we mostly updated the commercial zones over the last several years, and the focus will likely be more on residential. And that's where the missing middle housing topic will will appear. And if you remember, this was on your work program last year, but it was sort of delayed due to COVID. So missing middle housing is basically looking at different kinds of housing types in single-family zones, such as townhomes or cottage housing. And also taking a look at perhaps extending limited commercial opportunities in residential zones, but intersections. And this was something that the council expressed interest in including in that. And as I'm sure you're you're aware, that Bus Rapid Transit is going to be coming to the SR 522 corridor. And so also, an important component of the update will be looking at the transit-oriented district as part of the land use element update. So that was just sort of a quick sum, and I'm going to have to see if I can keep going back if anybody has questions, because I'm I'm kind of trying to look at one screen here, so I apologize. So if somebody does have a question, Mark, would you just let me know and I'll stop talking? And for the housing strategy, again-
Actually, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Just a quick one. On the ACU, the commercial development in the single-family neighborhoods, is the docket item limit that consideration just to the street ends?
I think that's sort of sort of the preliminary take at where it would start. It's kind of dipping your toe in the water, kind of like we did with missing middle. We started with the accessory dwelling units, and now we're expanding that to look at more housing types. So I think sort of looking at commercial opportunities in single-family zones, I think would would at least start looking at the corners. But maybe there is, I don't know what the community appetite is for broadening that look allowances, but yes.
No, I was just wondering if we had specific direction on that from the city council.
Okay. Okay. And then just I have just received a text from Laurie. Rita, if you could please promote her to a panelist.
Just give me one second.
Hey Debbie, while we're while we're waiting for Laurie, I had maybe another follow-up question. And that is, was there a reason the council chose corners? Is it is it just kind of visibility in residential neighborhoods or some other? Some other reason why they focused on that?
I think it was more on walkability. So it's looking at what it is sort of walk, being able to walk to sort of serve those daily needs, almost like a corner shop. You know, that if you say needed a pint of milk or a loaf of bread or something like that, you could sort of walk to to somewhere to get to to get that local service. So that's what what sort of prompted that. And the information in your packet is more of the Strong Towns approach, which again, the Strong Towns is encouraging, like I say, that the missing middle housing and sort of encouraging more commercial opportunities. So that's why we included that information in your packet.
Great, thank you.
So Laurie, I don't know if you can unmute yourself. Jolly good. So I basically just got through the the land use description, and I'm there in housing. So I'm happy to keep going unless you want to take over.
No, I'm I'm happy. My apologies. This was a new technological problem for me. It just completely froze, but I'm back. Thank you, Debbie, for stepping in in the crunch. The second, so the second project on the docket for this year is the Housing Strategy Plan Discussion of Missing Middle Housing. And again, this started in 2019 with a panel of developers and architects. And then because of the pandemic pause, even though this was on your docket for last year, we did not get to it. And and so it makes a lot of sense to fold this discussion into the update of the land use and housing elements. It's a pretty fundamental issue for those two elements. And it sounds like Debbie has already talked about how the city council had expanded the discussion to to consider not just missing middle housing, but small-scale commercial, perhaps at intersections, kind of the corner store approach. The last thing on the docket is an update to the capital facilities element. And that is necessitated just by some changes to surface water projects. We don't have to update the capital facilities element in conjunction with the city, the city council's adoption of the capital facilities plan. But when if they get somewhat out of whack, then we do need to go ahead and update the element. So we will expect to do that at the end of the year. I don't imagine this will be a significant amendment at all. I think it'll probably be a very small task, but something that we need to take care of. So if you didn't have more questions about the docket, I had three other items to discuss tonight. And those were the Public Participation Plan, the Community Survey, and the Related Goal Identification Exercise, and then just the Kenmore data. So any more docket questions? Hey, I don't see any shaking hands. And did you all have a chance to meet Mike Stanger? Okay, great, good. So the Public Participation Plan. State law requires that when you're doing a comprehensive plan amendment, you have early and continuous public participation, and you have to set out how you're going to accomplish that. And we have standards already that meet the standard in our municipal code. And that's the requirement, you know, how people can apply for the docket, how this went, how and when the city council chooses the docket, and then how the public notice and the public hearing is conducted for a comprehensive plan amendment. But when we're approaching a project as significant as the comprehensive plan update, we think it's important to do something more. We did this actually with the critical areas work a few years ago. But we want to set out a true public participation plan. And particularly because we're doing this work remotely, at least for some part of the year, we're hoping that we can get some creative ideas from consultants. And we've also asked in the request for proposal for consultants that they particularly focus on historically disadvantaged communities. So we think that needs to be an emphasis. So those proposals are due today, in fact. And and then they go into the city clerk, and then they'll come to us. And and we expect to choose the consultant, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, and get the contract in place in March for them to develop the Public Participation Plan, which would then come back to you in draft for you to take a look and and see what you think and if you have other ideas. So any questions about that particular part of the project, the Public Participation Plan, and how we're going to move forward with that? Okay. Then we'll turn to the meat of the matter, and that is the community survey. The same consultant who does the Public Participation Plan and drafts that, we would put them under contract and have them do a statistically valid community survey. And we want to do that to help get some information about community priorities and policy trade-offs as we launch into this effort. If if you provide a list of goals, and everybody can agree that they like the goals, that's one thing. But when you're when you have goals that could potentially compete, that's a different question. And what we're hoping to tease out through this survey is how the community feels about goals and what are their priorities. So attachment two, and I'm feeling very nervous, but I'm going to share my screen so everybody in the audience can see it as well. So hold on just a minute, and I'll be right back. So can you all see attachment two here?
Yes.
Okay. So this was the list of goals that we identified. And we went through the comprehensive plan and tried to pull out ideas and concepts that we thought were worth evaluating. And I know, I mean, I've been reading a lot about survey research, and certainly we are not going to be able to ask every question we would want to ask. There may be a very strict limit, in fact, but I'm not a survey designer, so I'm not sure exactly how many things we can trade off against each other. But I wanted to present this list and talk about it, see if the commission agrees that this is an appropriate list to be considered as we're developing a survey, see what we've missed, see if there's anything that's confusing, and just get your general feedback. I know that there are no goals here about environmental protection. And that was a deliberate choice, because we just updated the natural environment element and the shoreline sub-elements a couple of years ago with the critical areas work. Similarly, the parks, recreation, and open space element, which was adopted last year, there are not goals related to that. It's been Kenmore's a policy to do sort of an review of the comprehensive plan over a number of years. So we sort of rotate through the elements rather than try to tackle everything in, you know, 2023. When it's due in 2024, we take it in steps. And so we feel confident that the natural environment and shoreline sub-elements are good. They've been reviewed by reviewed and approved by ecology. And again, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space has been approved by the state in conjunction with the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan that they the state reviews to make us eligible for grant funding. That's a long way to say. That's why those goals are not included in this list, in case you were wondering. But the ones we did identify were affordable housing, reliable and effective transit, which would include the bus rapid transit and potentially a ferry, economic development, decreased vehicular traffic, tree preservation, protection of single-family neighborhoods, providing a diversity of housing types, the ability to walk or bike to shopping, having a vibrant downtown, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And although those words do not appear in the 2015 comprehensive plan, certainly the vision talks about a welcoming community. And sustainability, including resource and energy conservation, and then density in urban areas to protect outlying rural and resource lands, since we Kenmore is in the urban growth area. So what have we missed? What what other items do you think we should be thinking about?
I have a question about the beginning statement here. Laurie, you just talked about environmental protection given and not a trade-off. I want to make sure that I'm reading that right. So that means that it's not going to be evaluated against other policies and priorities, but that it will be given first-tier consideration by the city. And and then the things that get prioritized through this. Is that right or not right?
Well, you could you could look at it a couple of ways. The city has really gone to great lengths to protect critical areas and to protect the shorelines and that kind of thing. So that is kind of a given. It's not that we would be trading off affordable housing against environmental protection. The city has already taken the position that environmental protection is important, and they've put that into these other chapters of the comprehensive plan that have just been approved over the last several years. So that would be one way to look at it. You could say, well, we think environmental protection is so important that it should be a predominant goal over all of these other things. And if that were the case, you could address it in a different way. So I I'm not sure that that's where we are, since we're talking about balancing goals, but that would be an approach to take. So I'm not saying that the natural environment and shoreline sub-elements are the predominant goal. I'm saying that we've looked at the goals for those protections, and they are already written.
Okay.
I guess I have some sense of unease over this. If you look at it from, I think, the point of view of who are likely to be the survey respondents, which is an average Kenmore citizen, they don't read the comprehensive plan. They might not have that information that these are already highly valued by the people who are going to be reviewing the survey. When you're talking about trade-offs, and you don't have those primary goals and things that we've already taken off the table as being important, you don't have that on the list of trade-offs. I'm I'm concerned about that, particularly when you've got some things on here that would directly potentially or obviously impact some of those open space and recreation, like economic development. You could pursue economic development, but one of the trade-offs may be that you use the available open space or future open space or parks for economic development. There's a clear trade-off there. I'm not sure how we would understand that or how someone reading this would understand it and be able to value that type of trade-off. Now, I can see some of the couple of the other bullet points here where you have that same issue. So I appreciate that we recognize these things. We put them into the comprehensive plan and elsewhere. But from the reading by an average citizen, I'm not sure they would understand that and be able to voice it. We wouldn't understand how relatively important those were relative to the bullets you've got in this already.
I think my my wondering was coming from a similar place and wanting to understand how we were thinking about it or how the city was thinking about it, so that I could comment about, you know, like what my personal thoughts on it are. And also, from the perspective of a survey taker, if we don't state that as part of the survey, then they won't know, and it might end up feeling like they're being asked to prioritize things, but there's like a bit something big that might be a priority for them left out, that they don't have part of the conversation.
Okay.
I think that kind of that thinking is needs to be applied to all these bullet points, just definitions for all of these, whether they just apply to limited locations and other parameters. I think that we need to possibly have examples and just flesh these out a lot more so people can make informed decisions.
Right. And and I do need to clarify, there was no way that these would be the survey components. These are these are kind of thoughts that we were hoping to capture and evaluate through the survey. However, a survey designer would tackle that. So I think the idea of adding some examples is a really good one.
Yeah, I agree with Suzanne. I think some definition, particularly when I look at the first bullet, affordable housing, what does that mean? You know, in the context of something like the missing middle, affordable may be six or $700,000 homes, more affordable than what's out there right now. But when someone reads affordable housing, they may be thinking of something very, very different. And we've addressed that some other ways. So I think we do need to have some clearer understanding behind some of these bullets. And I understand, appreciate, you couldn't maybe put all of that in here right now. But I think particularly affordable housing is one. Economic development is another one. What does that mean? I think we need to be clear so people look at this and understand what we're talking about. And I do appreciate you could really end up going down a rabbit hole here on some of these. But I don't think you can just throw out things like economic development, affordable housing. I think people are going to be able to understand what it is they're responding to in a survey.
I would support those same comments. When I look at some of these topics, the need for a definition or the understanding of how nuanced it can be sort of pops out. I know and understand the need for decreased vehicle traffic, for example. But we're in fact adding more traffic on the Boffa Way and up Juanita. And those go to places that we don't control. It's how to get them through the area quickly without bottling up other areas. I'm hoping that people will understand that there's a certain nuance to all of these with sort of layers of understanding. Or the walk or bike to shopping. Probably need to address the issue of battery bikes, since that seems to be a growing usage developing. Anyway, it's the same comment that the others have made about definition.
Right. I think the other thing that's going to be very interesting is that some of these, and I think you mentioned it at the beginning, Laurie, or maybe Debbie did, that they're potentially at odds with each other. And so how we prioritize the the different goals or how we talk about about them in a way that people can can understand. You know, if 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 somebody is in favor of economic development in a particular area, and that requires that all the trees get cut down, then that's, you know, at odds with tree preservation. So there's kind of a cause and effect or interdependency or something like that that's going to need to be measured, I think, as well.
Yeah, I think we were actually hoping to get to some sort of a evaluation of trade-offs. Because I think, you know, if you put these goals in front of someone, I assume that, and said, do you support this? The answer would be yes. With everyone, right?
Pretty much.
And so that, I'm not sure that really helps if if what we really need to know- If, if what we really need to know is, well, between these two goods, which is the one that you care about the most?
But Laurie, I think that's absolutely critical. And the one thing that's, when you talk about trade offs, the one thing that isn't on this list is, well, for instance, if you're going to have a vibrant downtown or you're going to, a lot of these are going to have, or you're going to have a walk or bike to shopping. Sounds wonderful. But to do that, you're going to need sidewalks, you're going to need street changes. Every one of these has a cost to it. And the real trade off may not be, well, bikes versus trees. It may be bike lanes versus tax. And without having people understand that none of these are free goods. You don't get to pick free on this list, three things on this list for free. Every single one of them has a cost associated with it. And given the economic situation and the budget situation of the city, I think we need to be very clear about that upfront. That we could do all of these things, but they're going to cost money and given the current economic situation, that means higher tax. Unless somebody comes up with some other genius approach. That we can make money somehow. But I don't think that's going to happen.
Other thoughts are there besides the concern about the environmental protection goal or the parks, recreation and open space goal? Are there other things that we're missing? That you, this isn't the last chance to offer your input, certainly, but whatever guidance you can give us will help us as we begin to.
Sure. Well, I'll, I'll pitch in something. I, I very much agree with all the thoughts about better definitions and making the trade offs clear. And I don't know if this is part of the survey, but you know, one of those like, are, are you willing to pay for X goal? I don't know if that's, I don't know how, you know, the survey methodology necessarily, but I think Mike's, Mike's point is very well taken that, yeah. These all sound great, but yeah, how are they going to be actually accomplished? So mine was maybe a little more specific and, and I noticed here we have a protection of single family neighborhoods, but then in the vision statement, we say, support the character of single family neighborhoods. And to me, those are not quite the same thing. Supporting the character seems to me a little more flexible and it might be a little more amenable to, you know, missing middle housing. If you say, if you say protect single family neighborhoods, I, I understand that to mean keep them basically as they are right now. So I think I, I would maybe suggest that, you know, supporting the character is, is more consistent with the vision, but also allows for, I think, a little more flexibility for what we're talking about because that's really the, you know, I think arguably the key trade off we're talking about in, in missing middle housing is how, how will that affect potentially the, you know, the single family residential neighborhood? So I, I think we want to be, you know, clear as, as well as flexible. And so that's my suggestion on, on that one.
I, I think clarity is really important. I'm, I'm a little nervous about flexible because to me that, that means obfuscating, you know, being unclear about what your real intent is. So flexible, I, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I did, I didn't mean to suggest that we should say, yeah, I didn't mean to suggest we should say flexible in the wording. I, I was, I was thinking that supporting the character is a more flexible definition. But that's just my, my thought.
Right. And I think that does come, we can look, attachment one was the vision statement. And we can see, I think that is the way it was phrased. Supports the character of it, single family residential neighborhoods is from the vision statement. So rather than protection of, you could say, support the character of single family neighborhoods, supporting the character of single family neighborhoods.
Suzanne, does that get to your point?
I would still say that that needs to be defined. What is that? What does that mean? What is the character of a single family residential neighborhood? Because there, there again, each one of us may have a different idea of what that is.
What may help here is if we had some kind of a, a meaningful preface to the survey, an integral part of the survey, but a preface, something that really made this concrete in people's minds. So they were, when they were thinking about the trade offs, they understood what the implications of those decisions would be. So the sort of preface things I would see in a preference would be something along the lines of within the next X number of months, the city council is going to be discussing and making decisions on these key points. So when you're talking about single family neighborhoods, we'll be looking at potentially these changes in zoning and single family neighborhoods. We would be looking at economic development, which would, the sort of decisions the city would be making would be fill in the blank. I, I think we have to, we have to put this in some kind of concrete form. So people understand what they're really, what the decisions are. And they aren't just going through a, a list of goodies and checking off a, a list. And they've got to understand that these are trade offs. And here's the sorts of decisions that the city council is really going to be thinking about or is thinking about already. So they understand the consequences of the trade offs. Money's part of it, but there's more to it than that. And I think that would help them understand the immediacy of this as well.
Something similar, although I guess stated a little bit differently, Lori, was if, if it would be possible to maybe include some of the objectives or proposed objectives for each of these goals. Because many of these goals are broad and I mean, goals are meant to be broad, but potentially connecting some of the dots that some of my colleagues here have said, maybe considering some sub objectives under each one that maybe flush out a more defined version and also kind of an expectation of what the citizens may expect if they were to prioritize these goals over others.
I think there's probably a succinct way to phrase that. I think Nathan, you're right. I, it could be, for instance, under the single family neighborhood, the, the decision that the city is going to be looking at is should we allow small scale commercial activity within, within the single family neighborhood? Now, that puts it right out there. And I think would also invite people who are thinking about this seriously to go and ask more questions about it. Within single family neighborhoods, should we change the zoning to allow? I'll call it multifamily, you know, the missing middle type of development, lack of a better name for it. But we could lay it right out there. And so people understand when they, at least mentally, you're checking a box. They understand where that's, what that's leading to. And then you could have a meaningful discussion later. And I think you get more community involvement if they understood it at that level.
Right. And maybe it kind of gets back to that earlier comment about examples.
Yeah. Yeah. And it probably, examples are good, but I was thinking even more specifically about here are the sorts of decisions, concrete decisions, actual decisions. They're going to be considered by the city council over the next year or so. They're going to make a decision about whether or not there should be small scale commercial development within single family neighborhoods. Let's tell them that. So they understand they have a context for what they're being asked.
Yes. I think that I, I agree. And I think it would be nice if our community had the, the larger context in which the city council is contemplating making these changes because they're not just scattershot. You know, considering making these changes, it's all in the context of our communities grow and change. And there are certain pressures on our community from the environment and climate, for example, financial considerations. And, and so we want to be mindful about how we change. Because I, I think sometimes communities, this, this, this comes up for me when I hear protect single family neighborhoods or even support the character of them. I, like, there's a lot of reaction behind those things, like people get very attached to how things are. I, but I think we need to bring people along with the, the why of, of why the city council is considering these changes. I think that would be important.
I think what we have to sort of say is it's not really that the council's going, the council wants to know, is this something that the community supports? So I think this is part of this outreach is would the community support opening up the box a little bit in single family neighborhoods? So you wrote, that's what you're really asking them because the council wants to see what the community wants. So you're not really presenting it as this is sort of a fait accompli. That these kinds of things will happen in a single family neighborhood or there will be changes in the commercial. This is kind of asking the community, what is the community vision for Kenmore? And that then gets into your recommendations then to the council to say, here's what we heard from the community about these topics. And this is what the community thinks are the important goals. And if there were competing goals, here's kind of what the community's preferences would be. So that's why this is that, that, I guess, I guess what we're, we're trying to sort of present this is, you know, there are broad goals, there are competing goals. And how these are framed in the survey is going to be key. And so it's sort of like, what is your, we want to make sure that we're on sort of the right track in sort of the broad goal so that when we hire the consultant, we can help, they can help us and you, you are the planning commission staff, frame that community survey to get that feedback. So you know, to, to these kind of questions.
I think that's well said. The other thing that comes to my mind, maybe even another 10,000 foot higher level is when I read a lot of the literature, including some of the literature that's in our packet, you almost get a sense of there's an inevitability out that we have to accommodate more density. We have to accept these changes. That we are, because of outside pressures of various sorts, Growth Management Act being one of them, but only one, not the only one. There are demographic and economic trends that are characterized as requiring us to make changes. Is that true? How do we communicate that? Do we get, do we, is a survey going to help us as a city or the city government make decisions about what that vision is? Or are we already, or, or do we have to, what do we have to accept? What is the vision? I can remember being on the city count, on the planning commission some years back when we talked about the vision for Kenmore. It was very different from what we're talking about right now. You know, when people talked about a walkable downtown, you know, they were thinking about a small building sort of thing. Affordable housing wasn't an issue or something that we really were thinking about tackling. Density, economic development. Yeah. Okay. Let's have some more jobs, you know, let, let's see what we can do. But it feels like the intensity of this increased and I'm not sure our community is ready to make decisions on that or they're fully aware of it or would accept it. So what's the role, I guess, put it into a question, what's the role of the survey in educating and preparing the citizenship for these changes? And just how inevitable are they? Do we get to make some decisions? You know, do we stay? Do we have to change? Why do we have? I'm not sure people are clear on that.
Yeah, I think it probably, that's you were talking about a preface to the survey. And I think, you know, it is important to identify that, yes, there is an expectation of growth because if the growth doesn't happen inside the urban growth area, it happens outside the urban growth area. And particularly because so much community effort, Kenmore is now a high capacity transit community. And there are certain expectations that go along with that. It doesn't completely define how the community should move into the future, but but I think a change is, is inevitable. I think you're right. I don't think the option to not consider change is in front of the city.
How do we get it in front of them? How do we have a valid survey if they don't know that?
No, that's what I'm saying.
I'm just playing devil's advocate. Yeah. But I think as we're building the survey or whoever, it's a preface or something else. I, I think we have to understand that the survey is going to be an important tool for educating people in the community about what the level of decisions are. You don't want the questions like, well, no, I don't want to grow. You know, you, you, you're going to have people are going to be there anyway. We have to help them understand really what the goal is behind that. What you have on your list are goals, yes, but there are drivers behind that. Not everybody out there, I think, not a lot of people understand that.
Right.
I, I like the, the use of the word driver, Mike. I, I think that's, um, that's really powerful here. And I think that's often what your average citizen doesn't understand is what's driving these different decisions. And I, I think it would be good if, for instance, let's just say that we were required to have a certain percentage of affordable housing or the city would, would lose some funding from the government. That's, that's a, a pretty big driver. So I think just the more information we can give to the community around these different goals, the better informed they'll be and the better decisions they'll be able to make.
Maybe we should be thinking about something as a precursor to actually throwing the survey out there, whether those are city town hall meetings of some sort where you can come in and have these discussions. We had a discussion on the missing middle. But that was a while ago and people may not connect that to the sorts of decisions or trade offs that they're going to be responding to in the survey. So some town hall educational sessions before the survey, so they really understand what's in there. At least for those who choose to participate, that I think would be useful. I just don't want us to spend a whole lot of time and money on a survey. It comes back and people are not really understanding what they're responding to. And we come back and we find that out that, you know, we thought everybody really liked this idea until we actually started considering it and putting it out there. And you got a very different response because people didn't understand the questions or the issues that were behind the survey questions they were answering.
Yeah. I, I really like the idea of of some community education before, you know, this would be part of the public participation plan that, you know, try to move everyone to a common understanding of what we're talking about, kind of what the trade offs are, what these things mean. What are the drivers that are, we're looking at in terms of this comprehensive plan 20 year period? And then maybe the survey, rather than being the first thing that happens, it's the second or the third thing that happens after the community has had a chance to talk about some of these issues and, and really understand.
I, I think if we did that, whoever our consultants are, could probably help us with that. But I think we'd have a much more meaningful and useful survey if we built that base community understanding before we, before we tried to ask these very difficult questions.
Right. One thing I, I didn't mention as part of the public participation plan is that we're actually talking about an actual branding effort. So that we would have, and this may seem, I don't know what you'll think of it, but we really want to have a logo. We want to have a something that invites people in and reminds people what we're doing and that kind of thing. So that what we hope to do is really launch this community conversation. And in the course of that, gather input to help make these updates to the vision statement and eventually to land use and housing that reflect what the community wants.
Laurie, I can't remember if, if anything like that was done for the parks, rec and open space. And there's a survey and there were several different open houses for that, which I thought all of that was really great. Did they have a logo for that or something?
Not specifically for the parks element. Where, where this was most recently implemented was for the walkways and waterways projects. And if you remember pre calling it walkways and waterways, it was called Imagine Kenmore. And that they had the Imagine Kenmore out, public outreach effort, which then led to walkways and waterways, which are now the six projects being implemented under that bond measure. So that was when successfully had sort of a a, a brand or an image for those projects.
The other thing about this project, this The other thing about this project, this update is that it's not sort of a one year, here we are, now we're done. It's going to continue over the next three years, basically. And so it seemed important to have some sort of a tie or link that would remind folks that yes, this is what we're doing. And, and, and encourage them to follow it with a name that they can keep track of and, and that kind of thing.
As part of community education around this, I think identifying drivers, I think will be helpful for the community. I also wonder if it might be helpful to think about why things are the way they are today. You know, we didn't just arrive here, there were decisions made in the past that have structured how our lives in Kenmore look. To me, it seems like it's a very car oriented layout. And I think it helped me as I was reading through these things to think about that. And to think about, does it always have to be like that? What, what, would it look like if it were different? Like we've designed our lives. How can we, can we, you know, we can keep designing them, we don't, you know? And this doesn't really fit into this conversation where it's gone right now, but it is something that I was thinking about a lot. And wanted to make sure that I put out there just for us all to, to think about. But this is, this is related to my thinking about environment and climate and also to diversity, equity and inclusion. The one which diversity, equity and inclusion made it onto the list and then environment. I didn't, but for, for good reason. For me, I think that those are two things that need to be the lens through which all these other decisions are made. In my ideal world, that would be the case so that they're not. I think we have to have policy, there are policy considerations and specific policies that we have to make about both of those categories of, of things. But that they also need to be lenses through which we look at all of our policies. And priorities, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't, again, it didn't really fit into where we were going, but it was something I've been thinking about a lot.
Well, just, just to sort of build on that a little bit. There are sort of separate and related work program items being done by others that sort of also kind of dovetail into this effort. So for example, the Climate Action Plan is a work program item that has been taken on by another city department. Development of a diversity, equity and inclusion policy is, is another item being taken on by a different department. And the outcome of both those efforts then will directly feed into the comprehensive plan element. Because also both those topics are going to be required to be integrated into the comprehensive plan update as well.
Thank you. And then this is just a small thing that is specific to, to one of these priorities that's on the list. It's the walker bike to shopping. Which I don't have any problems with asking people about that, but I wondered why it was commerce centered. Like we could also say like just walkability or bikeability in general, like to parks and open spaces, to community gathering spaces, to shopping. You know, all of those instead of just
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, what I was thinking of was the, the notion that the city council has asked us to include, which is walking or biking to a commercial area.
Yeah, it should be included for sure.
Yeah, so if if I'd like to tease that out, whether we could make it a broader goal and then make that a subsection. I don't know, or whether it is a subsection under the support for single family neighborhoods or whatever.
Was, was that included in the parks and recreation and open space? Was that a consideration there, the walker bike to parks? I, I thought it was. Yeah, maybe that's why they're specifying this as shopping.
Yeah, you, you're correct. In the, in the pros plan, walkability and a 10 minute walk to park or open space was a, was a goal in the pros plan.
Well, other comments or we can talk about the last set of information and get some feedback there. But this has been a great discussion, very helpful. So if you have more to say, please do.
Well, Lori, I've just, I, I think there are a lot of really good points made. So maybe what's your thinking now about how to proceed with these, with these goals and, and in the survey, based on what you've heard so far?
Yeah, well, I am not going to be the one drafting this. I am, so what I hope to do is take these ideas with, you know, there were several great ideas that went with it. And then once we have a consultant, a survey expert on board, say, here are the things we heard. We heard education is important. We heard examples and objectives under goals is important. We're interested in trade offs, not just saying, oh, do you like this or not? But really recognizing that sometimes things don't fit well together. And I'm, what I'm hoping and trusting is that someone who does surveys professionally is going to give us some input on how to tackle that. And it may be that we can't tackle all of these. It's too big and nobody is going to wait around for a half an hour survey when really what they want to do is spend 10 minutes max or something like that. So I can't really answer your question because I don't have the expertise to answer it. And soon we will have the expertise and then we'll figure out how to tackle it.
No, I appreciate that. That's a very good point. And yet sort of, I would second the, the importance of the whole community education. Are you going to bring that up with the consultant? See how that might fit into the, the timing of a, of a, of a survey then?
Right, so the, the same consultant who, or it may not be the same consultant, but it's a consultant team potentially is going to be doing the survey and the public participation plan. So the two things can dovetail very neatly, I hope, so that we, you know, can set out, well, here's the activities that are going to happen. Here's where the survey is going to happen.
Great, good. Okay, anybody else have anything more for Lori? A lot of great ideas coming out here.
Yeah, I, I have one quick question. I agree with all of you about some of the other plans and ideas for this, but just, just a quick little surface level thing that occurred to me as I was looking over this list. It was a clarifying question for Lori and that was why tree preservation wasn't, isn't a part of environmental protection, why it's on the list? I just felt like it kind of didn't fit.
Interestingly, I don't think that the, the critical area project didn't really tackle trees. There was no conversation about trees except in, in, for example, a wetland, if a tree or a buffer, if a tree were removed, then the ratio of replacing the tree was increased. But it, it's different than a question of tree preservation in the community for tree canopy reasons and how that relates to some of these other things.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'll just chime in with one other thing that I think is a thread that goes through all of these, but it's not called out. And that's the commitment to density. If, if you look at a lot of these things, starting with tree preservation. If you're going to increase density, if you're going to go to a, the missing middle, if you're going to do anything like that, you're going to impact. If, if your goal is density and it appears to be that that is. I mean, the Growth Management Act virtually requires us to, to accept more density. We ought to call it out in some way. And whether that's in the prefix or if that's a preface or if that's an actual goal. I think we have to add, ask our citizens, how much density are you willing to tolerate? And we have to have them understand how much is actually required of us.
I, I have one more thing before, one small list of things before we move on. I was looking at the, the goals to be evaluated against each other and comparing it to the the vision statement, the 20 year vision statement. And a lot of those things were in there and some weren't. I'm just going to call them out. I don't have strong feelings that they all should be included, but the things I noticed that were in the vision statement, but not on the goals to be evaluated were waterfront opportunities for residents to co-create with the city, like volunteering. But with an emphasis on collaboration rather than like a top down hierarchy approach. Education, arts and culture, clear design standards and design standards for attractive, enduring and functional spaces.
Yeah, I, I would say that those certainly are part of the vision statement and they appear in different places in the comprehensive plan. But I, I, as I was developing the list, I was focused more on housing and land use related issues. And not, for example, the volunteering and collaboration and that kind of thing. If the, you know, if the commission feels like the, the topic should be broadened. We certainly could broaden the topics. Again, I, I offer that concern that the survey can't be too long. But we can get feedback in different venues. It doesn't all have to be the survey. And, and the truth of the matter is when you all craft a revised vision statement, you'll be holding and getting community input on it about, you know, did did you capture it or not? So I wouldn't say the survey is the be all and end all. And, and I would recommend that it stay focused on specifically land use and housing issues.
That's fair. In that context, maybe I would only consider. Yeah, yeah, nevermind. I take that back.
In the context of not to make it too long, perhaps they might structure it so that you have three or four sections. And the suggestion is that pick which section you want to work on and respond to it. If you've got more time and more interest, go to the other sections.
I know it looks like I'm jumping out of the picture here, but I'm writing. So I apologize for that.
I haven't thought this through, but Dennis, that's an interesting idea. I was looking just quickly at our list here. Maybe one way to organize those is going back to the concept of drivers. You could probably organize the goals under a small set of drivers. So people, then you'd have a linkage there between what are, you know, what are the potential goals, what are the trade offs related to an individual driver? Something for your consultant. It takes more than two minutes of looking at a list.
Hey Lori. Would it be, well, looking over this list, I, I see some goals that kind of overlap with one another. Say, for instance, diversity of housing types with support of single family neighborhoods and single family homes. Or things like walker bike to shopping and decreased vehicular traffic. Maybe, you know, considering the background of trying to keep this concise, is it possible to condense or combine some of these goals? With some, with those ones that are kind of overlapping or would that be getting a little too long of a goal?
Well, I, you know, these goals are not set in stone anywhere. And if there's an opportunity, if we can get to the critical issues by mining some concepts, that seems perfectly appropriate to me. Again, I didn't take that extra step because I'm not the survey writer and I, I think that we'll be able with professional help to craft something that really gets to where we want to be.
Okay, thank you.
So I think the frustrating answer for everyone is you have to be a little bit patient. And we're not going to solve it tonight. This again is sort of like a preliminary discussion. You've provided some fantastic feedback. But the public participation plan and the community survey will be kind of coming back to you. And the survey is part of that public participation. So this is not the only, one and only time that you will get to see this. And this will be coming back to you. And I know that, that's frustrating that we can't give you an answer tonight.
Okay, Lori, well, anything more you need from us? It sounds like you have, you have plenty certainly for any next steps you.
Great, that was extremely helpful.
Great, okay.
Okay, so I would stop sharing my screen here. And, and so the last item that we wanted to talk about tonight was information that we had collected on Kenmore. And Mike so generously offered to be here because he knows a lot about data in general and affordable housing and housing data in particular. So I thought that there might be questions that you would have that I would be unable to answer. So, and, and we'll just kind of walk through, I'm going to share my screen again and we'll walk through some of this information. And I'll note some of the interesting points that I found when I was looking at this. And then I'm very interested to hear what pieces of data call out to you or where we might be missing data or where data would be helpful. We don't have obviously a, a budget, but if we have readily available data that we could collect that would help you as you're thinking about this update moving forward, that would be great. So I'm going to share my screen another time here.
Okay, that may be accurate.
Okay, so can you see attachment three? This was attachment three to your packet?
Yes.
Okay. So we used a number of resources to collect this information. OFM is the State Office of Financial Management and every year we have to do a report about population. So that's where our population number came from. It's done in April and then verified in about June every year. So this was the 2020 estimate, 23,450. And from the time of our last update, which was in 2015, our 2014 number was about 2,100 people less. So we've grown by about 2,000 people since that last update. Gender and age, a couple of things really jumped out at me. One was that almost a quarter of the population is under 18. So I thought that was a very interesting number. And please feel free to jump in here if you have questions or comments. Otherwise, I'll just sort of keep going through the data and you can.
I'll just make an observation. Talking about the missing middle. You could compute the number, but between under 18 and 65 and over, which seems to be most of the population, we don't have a number for them.
We don't have what?
You don't have a number.
Oh, well, we could figure that out.
You could compute the number, but it just kind of stands out there. So we don't care about those people.
I, I was, it was not put in place for that reason.
It just was curious when I looked at it.
Okay, well, in future iterations of this chart, we'll put everybody else. And I should say that, that ACS is the American Community Survey. It's, it's a smaller. population that is analyzed, and it's done on a rotating basis. So it's kind of an interim step to the census. And it comes out, I think these are five-year estimates. I think they also have a three-year estimate, but they say it's better to go with a larger interval. And Mike, I don't know if you have anything you want to add about the American Community Survey, but that's where a lot of this data comes from.
Lori, do we know if that survey is typically pretty close to what the census numbers are, or if they're...
Well, I would say it's the best information we have. I mean, actually, the, the timing here is really good because we hope that before we do this final update, you know, we have a demographic section and housing data and that kind of thing. I mean, hopefully we will have real true census data, 2020 census data as the next couple of years go by. So then we'll have a sense of how close the ACS was to the census, but I don't think I could judge how it relates to the 2010 census. Okay, so race, again, this is a 2019 estimate, 80.3% white alone, 11.6, the next highest number of Asian alone, and then 8.1% Hispanic or Latino.
I have a question on one of the, the white alone, not Hispanic or Latino, how's that different from the white alone that's at the top?
Um, I, I think, and Mike, if you know the answer to this, please jump in. I think that white alone, not Hispanic or Latino, that perhaps Hispanic or Latino identify as white. I think there are different subsets of the same population. So for example, white alone up here is 80.3, but white alone that's not Hispanic or Latino is 74.6. So that would indicate to me that there may be Hispanic or Latinos that identify as white.
Right. All of those categories above the Hispanic or Latino line, those include people who also identify as Hispanic or Latino. Hispanic or Latinos considered is, is considered to be ethnicity, whereas those other groupings are, are called races. So this is a way to, to combine race and ethnicity.
Okay. Household by type. This one I didn't have 2019 data, but it indicates how many households, and then again, households with individuals less than 18 and greater than, greater or equal to 65. There's that same gap. And then there's a whole bunch of information here that talks about, are these households, families, are they non-family households? How many are householders living alone? How many living alone that are 65 and older? Anyway, it's just kind of a breakdown. I'm not sure how useful this is, but...
Actually, I think it can be very useful when we start thinking about land use. Understanding the large number of folks who are living alone, and the understanding the breakout of those who are seniors versus working age, male versus female, that would have, I think, an impact on the type of housing that would want to be built, and which you might want that as you're thinking about incentives or land use, so anything. So, yeah.
I certainly think the average household size is, that's a number that appears frequently and is used to translate population into housing units. So in a month or so, when we begin to talk about the city's capacity and, and population growth expectations, the household size information will be important.
I just don't think that average household size by itself really tells the story. You really have to break that down in between how much of that, if you, how large is the household size if you take out people who are living alone? And then how do you break out people who are living alone between seniors, working age? I think you have very different answers about how you would allocate, the way you would hope to allocate land use and housing.
Right.
Hey Lori, I have a, sorry about that.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I had a question. It's kind of related to this category, but I was wondering if it was possible to come up with a number, or maybe an estimated number of unhoused citizens within our city, especially when deal, dealing with issues such as affordable housing or, or missing middle. You know, I think that if it's possible, would play a role.
Yeah, I, I know that the homeless, homeless count is, has typically been an annual count, and I'm not sure it's broken down to the level of Kenmore. I think it might be more North County. Again, Mike, I don't know if, if you can speak to this. I don't think they did the count this last year, given the pandemic, but do you have any information on that?
No, you're exactly right. They didn't do a count this year. When they do the counts, they typically report by sub-areas outside of Seattle. So we, we never had exact counts for, for Kenmore. What we do have that's, well, it's not more current than last year's one-night count. We have some other sources for homelessness, including the number of schoolchildren who are reported by the school district to be homeless during the school year. So, you know, we could provide you with that information, information that comes through OSPI.
Well, I think more information would be better for less, especially when dealing with topics such as affordable housing in the future. I don't think it hurts to have some of those statistics, even if we don't end up using them or relying on them.
So we'll add that to the list. Okay, um, and then a significant number of people, 22%, have, speak a language other than English at home. So that speaks to the importance when we're thinking about public participation in how we're going to reach out.
Lori, do you have any breakdowns on what those other languages are?
And there are, there is a breakdown. It's, I don't know it off the top of my head, but there is a breakdown of languages spoken at home. So if you would find that useful, I'll add that as well.
What's hard to tell from that number of 22.1 is that just tells us we, we don't know whether it's primarily another language, or whether it's sporadically another language.
I'm not following you.
Well, you could have an older parent that speaks Russian, Romanian, or whatever. And so that is another language spoken at the home, but they have six people there. And so maybe a limited amount of time is spent in their native language versus the rest of the time in English. I just, I don't know if we're able to dissect that a little bit.
Yeah, we can certainly look into the information that we have and see if it's helpful. Okay, so the next section is household incomes, and, and this source is 2017. And you can see the footnote there about why it's older than some of the other information. But it gives us a real estimate of how many households are in the various income bands. So you can see that about 20% of households are either very low income or low income. And that's important when we get down to look at housing units and number of units that are affordable at different incomes.
Lori, I had a question on this one. So yeah, like you pointed out, 20% are very low or low income, and then we have 60% above median income, which on its face suggests, I don't know, it seems pretty stratified to me. You know, there's a fair number of people in the lower income categories and a fair number, a large number of people in the above median income. So I guess a couple of questions. One, I mean, how much above the median income, you know, the 60%, where, where does that fall? I mean, is there some, I don't know, comparative basis? And also, how this is compared to other communities? I don't really have a sense of, you know, is, if, how does Kenmore compare to Kirkland or, you know, other comparable areas? I just don't have a sense of, you know, are we, are we unique? Are we special? Are we different? I just don't get a sense from, from that, though. Any kind of comparative figures, I would find interesting, if not useful perhaps, but...
Right. I would suggest that if, you know, if you wanted us to look, for example, at Kirkland, Bothell, we could do that. I'm not sure that it is ultimately going to be helpful, except to say that we're unique or not.
Right. Any kind of comparison, I think, would, would kind of help put it in, you know, perspective, and it certainly does speak to the point of, you know, what are the needs for affordable housing and certainly.
I think it also, Mark, I think, wouldn't it also give us a sense about whether or not we or others are providing their fair share? I mean, we've seen a lot of things in the news lately about some areas in the community, of our surrounding communities who have really passed on, particularly on the affordable housing piece of this. It'd be interesting to know before we commit more than what anybody else is, or understanding that there's another issue underlying this. The other thing, when I looked at this, my first reaction was, oh, pretty much a normal distribution. You got about 40% one side of the median, 60% on the other, maybe skewed a little bit to the upper end. But I think there may be some important information in getting a little more detail on the distribution of that 60%. Are we, are we really a normal? Is that 60% on the high end is normally distributed as it is on the lower end? Or do we find that because of the type of housing we have today, that looks a little different? That might be some information we want to take a look at, particularly we're talking about economic development and the type of housing that land use we, we want to look at right into the future. If it groups around the median and it's normal, hey, then okay, we don't really have anything here. But I'd be curious to see what that looks like.
Yeah. Mike, do you know whether the, this data set, we could break that down a little bit?
We can break it down a little bit more. ACS tends to stop, you know, their income groupings. Yes. Some, I think somewhere between 100 and 200,000, and so we might not be able to show you much above that. But we can chase, we can flesh it out a little bit more. Another thing that they provide is quartiles and, or maybe it's, yeah, maybe quintiles. So we can, we can help illustrate the distribution a little bit better.
All right. And then this information was just by way of background about what are exactly the household income limits by household size that would fall into each of these categories. In terms of educational attainment, and we saw this with the last update, Kenmore is a well-educated community. And then in terms of employment, and again, this comes from the Puget Sound Regional Council. There are all these different data sources for information, but the bulk, 46% of Kenmore employment is in services. And when you say services, it's like, what is that exactly? So I included under the little star, the little asterisk, what that included. So that includes information, professional, scientific, and technical services, management, private educational services. And that's important relative to best year, because public education, there's another, you can see right, I don't know if you can see my little arrow, but there's another education, and that is public education. And then healthcare and social assistance, arts, entertainment, recreation, and accommodation and food services.
Yeah, Lori, I had a question about this, maybe, I think it relates to this sector, and that is, you know, what percentage, you know, we have employment by sector, how, how many, you know, Kenmore residents work in Kenmore? How many work beyond Kenmore? I think I've seen that figure in prior, prior dockets. I mean, pre and post-COVID, there may be very, you know, there may be very different answers to that, but...
And it's possible that we could get that from the latest ACS. It was only three, I think it was 3% of Kenmore residents worked in Kenmore. That's what I recall.
Which was several, that was several years ago, right?
Right. That's when we, the last update.
Okay.
So we can check and see if we have newer numbers.
Yeah, I think that would be of value.
And I second that, actually. Commissioner Orange, you took the words right out of my mouth. I was about to ask the exact same thing, especially when, you know, it's on our docket to evaluate the TOD. I think knowing who's coming and who's going within Kenmore and who's staying, I think that would be some really important and necessary information to have.
Okay.
I'll just note this. I don't think we can get meaningful data on it, but given current trends, what we don't have in that employment by sector is those who are employed at home.
Yeah.
You can get that.
You can. That would be very interesting to know, particularly if we had trend data on that.
Who said you could get that? Is that Nathan?
The way we'd look at these numbers.
Well, I said that. Now, I don't know if that would capture or potentially be skewed by, you know, COVID situation. Have to read up on that.
Okay. So work at, a question of how many people are working at home?
Yeah.
All right.
Just the whole question, home-based economic activity, I think is going to be key to a lot of our discussions.
Right.
And even, even if the numbers, and they probably are skewed by COVID, I think there's something we can be thinking about, just what percentage of that do we think would actually go back? And a lot of what we're hearing out there in the press and elsewhere, and actually seeing, we're just not going to see companies coming back into downtown or concentrated sites the way they used to, which has a huge impact on both their transportation needs, type of housing, what are people seeking? People fleeing downtown and they're looking for what? Are they looking for? Are they looking for the missing middle? Are they looking for what? I think that's going to be a key driver if we're looking 20, 30 years out.
Yeah. I think the literature is all over the map on that topic. So whether we'll be able to really pin it down, maybe in six months, we'll have a better sense of who's going back to work.
Yeah, and I suspect the timeline on that is probably a lot greater. This is a heck of a time to try to do a 20-year forecast when everything is being turned upside down. And who knows where it's all going to land.
We'll do our best.
I wonder if it's on you, Lori, for that.
So speaking of transportation, I think we also had this information before, Lori, and like Mike indicated, it may be impossible to, you know, get any really quality data now, but how people travel to work when they were going to offices and may travel when they, you know, return offices in other, you know, locations, presumably outside Kenmore. I do remember seeing that figure before. How many people rode transit? How many people rode single occupancy vehicle and such like that? But any, yeah, any data that could speak to transportation patterns, that again, it may, it may not be, you know, it may not be viable at this point, but...
I think we maybe could get it from the previous, sort of pre-COVID time, but I, I think we maybe could get it from the previous, sort of pre-COVID time, but I, I just don't know that.
How useful or how relevant.
I think it's, you know, it's a complete aberration and, and I just don't. It's kind of been that same category. Are things going to go back to the way they were or are they not? Who knows?
Right. Who knows? Okay. Yeah.
Yes, or they're not, but it's a 10, five to 10-year timeframe for that shift. Which, you know, begs the question, so, okay, how aggressive do we want to be in some of our changes? Want to be more aggressive, somehow get ahead of the curve? We want to not be too far ahead of the curve. So we, we don't have the right housing mix or, or land use mix for the next five to 10 years. It looks good 12 years out. That was a smart decision. We, we got to live between now and then. It is tough.
It is tough.
Handicap this race.
All right. So the next couple of pieces of information are specifically about housing. And again, this came from the 2020 OF State OFM estimate that we do every year. So it looks at how many units of different types there are. So one unit, again, the predominant housing type. And then beyond one unit, the next largest group is the five or more unit. So that's the apartment building typically. So this, I thought, was so illustrative of the missing middle. If, if you look, two units, three and four units, 4%, it, it just shows that it's kind of the housing types have been split into these two alternatives. Single family, multifamily, and not so much that middle small, small unit development. Affordable housing units is the next one, and this is from some preliminary data that King County has done. And, and I think we're going to see to the point of being able to compare ourselves with our neighbors. When the county-wide planning policies come out, I think there will be information looking at different jurisdictions and, and the banding within those jurisdictions. But here you can see in the 0% to 30% AMI, the number of housing units, we're at 3%. 31 to 50, 12%, 51 to 80, 14%, and then over 80% AMI, 71%. And in all those categories, if you compare that with household incomes, really, and this is no surprise. The, where we're lacking is in the 0% to 30% AMI band. And then we talk about land area. Kenmore is 6.1 square miles, how many paid, miles of paved streets we have. I thought this was just interesting information that we could, that'll be useful, for example, for the transportation element. And then lastly, this zoning, we had a request from an agency to try to determine how much of our city acreage was zoned for residential uses versus mixed use. Kenmore really doesn't have any commercial zones that don't allow mixed use, commercial plus residential. It's not necessarily required, but it is allowed. So total city acreage zoned for residential, 78%. Total city acreage zone for mixed use is 7%. And then you can see the breakdown in that residential zoning, how much is for a single family versus for multifamily. And then the balance of the acreage is in rights of way. It didn't include like parks and the public semi-public area or the golf course. So that's why the total, the 78 plus seven does not total to 100%. But I thought that was interesting information. So. So that's our first cut at some data. We've heard a number of things that we'll try to pursue. Are there other pieces of information that you all would find particularly useful? And we can keep adding on to this as we go through over several years. It's, this isn't by any means the end of this.
I don't know how urgent this is, but one of the things I remember we looked at that was very interesting, the last time we looked, particularly some of the last rezoning we did in the commercial district and looking at the mixed housing, was the age of some of the, the house, housing units. And I think we discovered that there was a large section of, or percentage of our mixed, existing mixed housing. That was fairly well depreciated. And so we think about redevelopment opportunities. That's something we might want to know about. And where they are. Actually, I guess you could probably extend that if you could, even to our residential areas. I think we have a very skewed distribution perhaps in areas of the city that were developed early and those more recently, some of that older housing and where they are. That's something we wanted, might want to know about, thinking about how we might, if we would want to reallocate some of the single family neighborhood space. What, what's most prime or, or most ripe for redevelopment? We did very little or nothing at all. That would be interesting to know, and particularly where.
Well, look and see if we can find something about that.
And so while you're doing that, Lori, you know, and I, maybe anticipating the discussion we're going to have about commercial units in, in developments in the single family. It's getting a sense of, we talked about the intersections. You know, what intersections are we talking about? What, which are really viable intersections? The way some of our, most of our, many of our streets are laid out, you don't really have a clean four-cornered intersection. So where are those opportunities and, and what's on them now? We looked at some of this data earlier when we, we looked at rezoning some of the commercial areas.
Yeah.
Those, we probably want to look at some of those again.
Yeah.
Do we, particularly those that we, we rezoned as mixed use. I, I have a feeling that our, our available stock of traditional four-cornered, which is prominent both in the missing middle and also in the in the commercial piece, they may not be as great as you would expect in a traditional city. When you look at some of the older cities, which is the ones I grew up in, where you had, you really were a gritted out, eclectic, designed city. As I don't think our streets, at least uniformly throughout the city, are actually designed that way, which would limit the applicability perhaps of some of those approaches.
I guess kind of along those lines, I would also be interested in, in understanding where all of the public transportation is currently. We're going to be developing an area where there's no possible bus route there ever, or not for a long time. We might want to consider a different area where there is easy access to transit.
The section with square miles and miles of paved streets. I wonder if we have the ability to indicate miles of sidewalks, trails, et cetera, or at least an estimate. So we just sort of see what's available for the, the walking and the biking.
Right. I think we may not have that for this go around, but certainly when we get to the transportation element, which is, is targeted to start next year, that I'm sure is something that they're going to be looking at. I seem to recall that we had information about that last time around.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Lori.
No, I was going to say, that's all I, that's all I have.
All you got? Okay. I'm sure you had much more than that, but we'll save it for another, another, another evening. Okay, anything more for, for the, I do notice the agenda has a couple of email written citizen comments. I, I take it those are already entered into the record and we don't need to.
Right.
Or do, or do we?
So we've taken kind of a new approach with this correspondence. It's something that we've typically done for projects that we've formalized it now, which is that when you receive written correspondence, for example, if someone came and spoke and submitted something or they emailed the commission, we send it on to you, but then to make sure it's documented in our filing system, we're noting which ones have gone out to you. So you previously received those two, I think they were both emails. They're listed at the bottom of your agenda, but we're just noting that for you so that if you didn't see them or you want to reread them, you have them and we have them captured in, on our side. So we know which public correspondence you received. So for example, I think you received an email today from David Morton. And so that correspondence will be attached to your next agenda, even though you've already received it. So someone looking to see, well, did the planning commission ever get my information? It would be listed on the agenda.
Right. Okay. Okay. So anything else for tonight, for, from anybody, from staff or from colleagues?
New commissioner question.
Sure, of course.
Oh, let me stop sharing this. This is awkward. Let me get rid of this. Sorry about that.
How are the emails? Are they ever responded to? Do people get any kind of response from us as a body or how does that work? Or they just come to us and reread them and that's, that's it or?
Yeah, typically. Most frequently, the correspondence you receive is related to a project. And so it's just considered public comment on the project that you think about as you're making recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, anything more for, for the good of the order from tonight from anybody? Okay, we'll see you in a couple of weeks then. I believe it's the next meeting, March 2nd, correct? Great. Well, thanks. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. Thank you.